Reminder just to sign stuff, which we're going to be doing tonight regardless. And first up, we have Diane Lynch, acceptance and encumbrance. Do you want to approach a mic? Would that be okay? And you can either, you know, join us at the table or at the dais. Your call. And if you feel uncomfortable, we can wear a mask as well.
I'm vaccinated for what it's worth.
I think we all are.
Yeah.
Okay. So I am here this evening to present to all of you this revised budget. And it was revised after the time of the last acceptance of the town budget. So I am bringing it here to you this evening for your final approval. The Board of Trustees of the library has approved it. They've signed off on it. It is still the same bottom line. It is just a real allocation of the assets within the budget. We had a personnel switch, which provided some more funds, which we then moved around and came up with this budget that we have in front of us here. If you would like to see the line items, the justifications, the ones that changed, I have spelled those out on the line item justification forms. So the bottom line is still the same. The majority of the changes took place within the staffing lines and consequently also in the FICA Medicare lines as well. So the bottom line is still the same and the changes are presented here in front of us. Does anyone have a question about it? I know you've only had about two seconds to look at it.
Actually, we had the packets.
We got it.
Yeah.
We did.
Yeah, we had this, but this until.
Justifications.
Yep.
Overall, though, it appears that what you're doing is mostly shifting from, you know, part-time into sort of the regular wages.
We did have a chance to hire one of our wonderful part-time people into a full-time slot, which was great. Keeping an eye on our electricity line, as I know the Budget Committee would like me to do.
Yeah.
Made a note.
You're playing favorites with the board, is that it?
I don't know.
She's just making an observation.
Yeah.
That's a good observation.
This is the additional information to map, I see.
And running on the far right-hand side of the sheet with the two colors is actually the check out from Anne A. Bear herself to make sure that my math wasn't way off. So it is Anne approved, so just so that you don't know.
That's good enough.
Yes.
So that's the Anne approved.
This is the Anne checked it out column over here.
Excellent.
This isn't the relying on Diane's math, which is always wise.
Well, in that case, what's expected of us?
She's just giving you an update because her trustees are already.
Yeah, right. Yep.
Costs haven't gone up, that makes me happy.
Well, you know, I don't want to thank the pandemic, but I guess we can thank the pandemic for part of that.
Very good. You can thank the trustees and your math and.
Anne's checking up the math.
Yep. I'll have to check Anne's math, but.
Is the purchase order that's here, is this a separate line item for us to discuss or a separate agenda item for us to discuss?
That is an encumbrance to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
So out of your new and improved, this is the one that got voted on in March?
My new and improved budget is for next fiscal year.
Right, okay.
This is the $3,000 that's.
This is from the budget that we're in. She wants to carry $3,000 out of this budget into this budget.
So we are actually, because we are hiring a new person to fill our children's slot, we are getting the library reopened again. We are implementing our summer reading program. So this is, the $3,000 is an encumbrance to hire a part-time summer helper to get us off the ground, reopened, get the summer reading program going again. So what was our overtime budget at the end of this fiscal year? We're asking to encumber that and help us charge into the next fiscal year with an extra summer helper while we get our new person off the ground and get our summer reading program underway.
And I assume that means you, this fiscal year, you had underspent your overtime budget just probably COVID-related.
Yes, we have. That is the amount of our overtime budget, yes.
Gotcha. That makes sense.
Very resourceful.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion on this one?
Trustees, the library trustees already have signed it and approved it.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about this one.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
I'm not worried about it then.
Thanks so much.
Colin, update on the Plymouth Municipal Airport.
How are you doing?
Okay.
How are you, yourself? Very good. This spring, we've been working to, Kathy and Anne and I have sat down and we've worked to bring some of the airport policies up to date, to bring them to a more comparable to other airports in the region, to adjust fees so that they're comparable, and also to develop ways so that people can use the airport efficiently, because we have a number of different ways that we can use the airport. And so with that, in a lot of research, we developed all these policies and I'm presenting these to you to show you how we are operating the airport. And so these should help to allow the airport to run much more efficiently. And I'm wondering if you had any questions, you had a look through them. It includes the typical airplane tie-downs outdoors, an airplane hangar agreement, and also there's the aircraft trailers, which includes gliders that live inside trailers and the powered parachutes that you see out there. They are stored inside trailers, so they have a fee structure for parking. And a couple of new things are introducing an airport camping policy to allow people to fly into the airport. And I would like to develop some spaces, as it is very beautiful on the backside of the airfield, where people could actually come to the airport as a destination and, you know, enjoy what we have here. Another policy is a community use, non-aviation policy, to allow for groups. We have an abundance of land on the airport and this would help to define a way for people to come, let's say, have a wedding or have some type of yoga classes or something like that, or even, you know, townwide yard sale. So we're looking to allow for things to be, to allow the property to be utilized and, you know, any way to streamline that, to allow for that to happen efficiently would be great. So.
I got a question about, you know, one of the first things is area requested for food truck farm stand parking.
Yeah.
Now, that's, I guess, already happening. So there was an agreement made to allow for that or?
That's what this parking lease agreement, yeah. Yeah, because he has been using the space across from, what is it, Perkins Farm.
Right.
His food trucks at Perkins Farm, but he's, maybe you can explain, Colin?
Yes. Last year, I was approached by the food truck vendor to use that area adjacent to their farm stand across the road. And that is our property. There's a strip of land, which is field, and so that they could park cars there and have customers be able to, you know, cross the road to go to their food stand there. I did make the arrangement and allowed for it. And I didn't actually check with the town when I did that. But now this year, they would like to continue that and we'd like to have a formal agreement, a lease structure, so that, you know, it covers us from any liability and, you know, so it increases the formality of that.
Has John Radigan looked over the lease? Yes. He actually added indemnification clause at the end of it, which you guys already had the original one. So he added that the lease, he shall indemnify and defend lesser, less or harmless against all actions, claims, demands, liabilities and damages. But he said the rest of it looked good.
Now, is this farm, this is a Perkins Farm food truck?
No. It's nourish. It's private.
Actually, I'd like to make a correction. It's Longview Farm.
Oh, Longview Farm.
Perkins lives across the street on a separate piece of land.
It's like calling it Anderson's Bakery.
Right. It's still doing.
Yes. So that food truck in that parking area has nothing to do with the farm that's across the street?
No.
There's parking there.
He actually parks his food truck on Longview Farms.
That's right.
Property, but he sells, he has people park across the road to come and buy from him.
Okay, so that is in some sort of arrangement with Longview Farms.
They have picnic tables.
Not some sort of awkward competition you've set up across the street or something?
They have picnic tables.
Yeah. And he also did fill out a vendor permit, which should be in the signature file.
Yeah, it was in the.
Yeah.
It's actually pretty interesting. We have.
It's very popular.
Yeah, it is very popular. And didn't, Colin, didn't DOT set up signs for crossing or something?
Yes. Last year, they added some crossing signs, you know, to allow people on the road to be aware of pedestrians crossing. And I believe we did check to see if there's any requirements for that property as a parking lot and we are all set for it to be used for that.
I was thinking that also, they don't anticipate like moving the food truck across the street, right? I don't think.
Don't think so, no.
Why wouldn't they?
Why wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be kind of weird for the fact that, you know, they hadn't arranged it with the town for their business versus like parking, then a competitor might be, you know, concerned that they were getting a deal from the town without them being there. And maybe, you know, Perkins or Longview, whatever, doesn't want any other business there as well. They appreciate, I think they both bring in business for each other.
Right.
So, you know, it's worked out quite well with them and that would confuse things.
Gotcha. So a parking lot doesn't confuse things?
Nah.
All right.
I don't think so. I mean, it could be Longview customers as well.
Right.
So. It didn't work out well. I think it's 300 bucks.
Take it where we can get it.
Yeah.
That's interesting, Colin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
It seems like, you know, they're very popular and, you know, the farm, the foods, you know, that they grow on the farm is, you know, they've got quite a following down there. And so it's developed quite a bit, a lot of traffic.
In terms of the fly-in camping sites, is there any plans for, or agreement for folks who are using those camping sites to use any bathroom facilities or anything?
Well, the sites are not prepared yet. This is a new area that we could probably have some creative, a creative way to develop some revenue for the airport. Facilities would be, it would be really nice to have some type of porta potty on the south side of the airfield where they camp, so they don't have to cross the runway on foot to use a building. So I would, I actually reached out to the university and have started conversations with a professor in the marketing department to develop student projects and to help market our airport in a various number of ways, because we have many different users and whatnot and different ways we could go with developing that. So having a facility on that side of the field would be ideal, you know. And I researched, it's about $150 per month to have a porta potty. And if we could support that with revenue from camping on the airfield and, you know, make it nice so that, you know, there's an experience there, maybe even provide wood bundles for people if they, you know, if they want to have a campfire or whatnot. It would be really nice, giving, we do have people that do fly into the airport occasionally. And, you know, it's a really big sky, beautiful open space, you know, you can see all the mountains. We may have a market for that. Also, there's a group of pilots who are helping to, we're developing a very, a monthly fly-in at the airport and I have a schedule of dates, you know, one Saturday per month this year. And just having people gather, flying in, and, you know, we'd like to promote the airport, ultimately, you know, develop any type of fuel options down the road to develop revenue and also, you know, hangar leases. That's the other thing, we'd love to be able to promote people building on our airport and signing up for a lease. So there's quite an engine of, you know, developing the airport marketing-wise, starting by getting people to come here and see it as a destination in its own, you know, as it's really a diamond in the rough. It's beautiful out there. And so this, I probably went off many directions. Yeah, porta potties, it would be ideal to have a porta potty on the south side of the field for the season. And just to accommodate.
Going all out, running water and?
We do not have any running water on the south side of the field. We do have some rudimentary facilities on a Quincy roadside in the building, but this would be primitive camping and advertise as such, you know, people fly in, set up a tent and, you know, come in for a weekend or an overnight as a fly-in option only, really.
Does this have any liability associated with it by having them camp that close to the airfield?
Having the sites, the runway has 125 foot from the center line, obstacle-free zone, and I do have that mentioned in there. You would not want to have any airplanes or tents or anything erected, you know, within that area. And so the map that I provided shows proposed spots that are well away from, you know, there's several hundred feet away from the runway. I would develop signage to help direct people to that area. And, you know, I think there's a few things in that order that would be very useful for that in developing some signage and getting some picnic tables.
Does any of this have to go by the planning board or, given that it's town land, are we able to sort of do as we please?
Well, we'd still have to comply with zoning.
Like comply with zoning and those sorts of things, but.
I think just a heads up, you know, we can just give it to the planning board. You know, June could bring it to them, but makes sense.
I like all these creative uses of the space. It's great.
Yeah.
Colin's busy.
It's nice to be able to create ways for the community to use the airport and, you know, develop a support of it. And so it's a beautiful property that we own as a town.
May lead to another hangar, which would be quite a bit more revenue and maybe some unmanned flights burned into.
Yeah. Yep. People be flying in an unmanned aircraft, oh, yeah, passengers, I don't know.
There are very few airports like Plymouth. Plymouth is really, it's so nostalgic. You know, it's a grass field and it's absolutely beautiful. Every time I go over there, I see people just coming to visit and just see the place and they're not really aviation people. They're just people that want to enjoy the scenery and.
And we have a couple of picnic tables at the building and they get a lot of use from people, just, it seems like, you know, it's a very open space, very peaceful and we try to keep it as well-kept, it's simple, you know, well-mowed and just, you know, I think people do enjoy it in that way a lot, which is, it's pretty nice. I see a lot of traffic, a lot of people pull over just trying to marvel at being there.
Sounds good.
Do you want to accept his proposed package with the, maybe zoning or planning or both? You know, look at it.
Yeah, I guess to always fly by June to see if it requires.
Fly by.
Wow.
Good job, Bill.
Yeah.
Yep. Just to see if it might require like zoning, but maybe not. But if the planning board be interested in hearing about the project, so.
Do you want to approve it subject to the approval of planning board?
Or to the town planner?
Or the town planner.
Yeah. May not even have to go farther than that, except just a heads up to the planning board. So is that a motion?
Okay, I moved it, we approve his plan.
Ooh. Well, subject to June's review.
Subject to the approval of town planner.
Any further permission that's required.
Seconded.
Okay. So Neil moved, Zach seconded. This could be a little bit easier. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Piece of cake.
So much easier.
Yep. Thanks, Colin.
Thank you so much.
Have to plan on camping out there sometime.
Can have to get a plane first.
You know, the Whipplewills are out there.
Oh, yeah?
I've been going over and listening to them.
Nice.
Hadn't heard Whipplewills in this neighborhood for 45 years. They're coming back.
Got to thank Little Warming for that or what?
When I was a kid, we used to hear the Whipplewills.
Cool. Well, I'm just going to talk about the red-winged blackbirds that are feeding at my feeder right now, but that's a different thing. So Scott and June, Scott's at 30 High Street in Kirk's. Is June on?
Chief is.
Looks like audio on.
Oh, no.
Okay.
There's audio.
Hey, June.
Hello. And I think Scott there or? Yes. Yes. Okay. Well, thanks for a little bit of time. I guess, are we in, we're not in non-public session, right? We are in public.
No, we're not.
Um.
Do we need to be or is that?
The, I guess, I just wanted to clarify that before I, I've been thinking about what I'm going to say here. I'll be a little, no, I just wanted to give a report back. We had with you via Zoom back, I think it was late March, and since that time, to talk about some code enforcement issues in Plymouth and some efforts to gain compliance on a few different properties. So the couple areas that we're looking at, we've made some progress on, we're still doing a lot of research on other areas. It isn't a fast process, as you know. And now that Scott's here, you know, helping, it's, we are pleased to say we've got some progress going on a couple places. So, but I want to kind of divide this into, there's sort of the planning board subdivision, site plan review areas to look at, as well as zoning that we cover. And sometimes there can be violations on different parcels for both the planning board kind of approvals that maybe were given and a zoning violation. So every case is different. They take a fair amount of time to look back at our historical records, which are not always in the best shape, but we are trying to piece together what we know from past records and past years and do the right thing by property owners and the citizens of Plymouth. So I will certainly want Scott to share what he's been up to on a couple of specific cases, but I just wanted you to know that we are looking at, there's really three areas around sort of the planning board, zoning board approvals, particularly the planning board, when, like traditionally, if a planning board gives site plan review approval for something, that could end up in a parcel being not operating in accordance with approved plan. So then we have to go back and sort of send them a notice saying, hey, here's what we approved, here's how you're not operating in the parameters of that. So we have a few cases that we're looking into specifically around that. I don't want to get into the details of where they are. I guess I did think we were going to be in non-public so we could talk more, because I don't want to, you know, we don't know for sure what the violations are until we do a little bit more work, but there's a few areas. And again, our goal of gain is always gain compliance and have equity, I guess, in how we are approaching these things. Another area of violation that can happen within site plan review and/or subdivision is specifically within our site plan review regulations, if somebody has been granted approval, it's very clear in the regulations, actually, that it's only good for 12 months in case, unless there's been some kind of active and substantial development that's been occurring. So we have, we're looking back over the last several years to see what has been approved and what's not happened, basically. And the reason why you have that regulation is because things can change. So there's definitely a fairly, I would say, significant development on Tanny Mountain Highway that from April 2020, that we're going to be sending a letter to saying, hey, what, you know, basically any approval that was granted, you need to recognize that though nothing's been done as far as we can tell and they need to come back if they were going to proceed. And I do believe that then they would need to, we're trying to have the planning board do a little bit more string to involving our town engineer, especially around issues where there's floodplain, drainage, erosion control issues. Those are really important areas to consider. So we've got that, we've got it one site. And then the third one can be also a change of use that goes, that happens at a property without site plan review. And change of use is important because it can trigger changes in requirements for parking. You know, there may be renovations going on, different things can happen. So we have a site on Main Street that we're looking into. The usual process was we reach out and say, hey, what's going on? Take it from there. So that's kind of that planning side of things. And so then more specifically around some zoning violations and other kind of code-related, we've been looking at the property on High Street and I'll let Scott give the update about that. And another property that we've talked about in the past, actually several properties in town that we've seen a lot of complaints about and we're moving ahead to have some conversations soon regarding that one too. Scott, do you want to share what you have about the property over in High Street or?
Sure. June, aye.
Before you said, do we need to go into non-public to discuss this more clearly? Before you said, do we need to go into non-public to discuss this more clearly or carefully, or would that be helpful?
I think it could be helpful, but I don't know what the notice requirements are for that.
We don't need to notice, notice it.
I'll make a motion that we go into non-public in accordance with RSA 91A3, comma, 2 reputation.
All right, Zach moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ted seconds. Any, oh, no discussion. Neil, your vote.
Aye.
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 Mary Ann?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Okay. We're now in non-public. Bill? Aye. I didn't even say Bill, I looked at you. Zach and Ted.
I just want to, I want to thank June and Scott for their hard work.
Yes.
Seconded.
Welcome.
Okay, let's, let's shoot for it. Well, gosh, darn it all. You know, there's that item there that was supposed to have discussed, which we can't get around to this time either, but the National Guard Armory discussion.
I, yeah.
And now the legislation's going to be out of, out of session soon anyway, and we'll, I'm, I'm thinking, we'll, we'll discuss it further regardless, but I'm thinking we could probably ask that we draft a bill for our legislators to bring forward to, you know, make that armory lapse to Plymouth. And maybe we can discuss that, maybe I can draft a bill, and we'll just take a look at it and see if it's appropriate for the town to go forward with it.